We're the only participants, so.
Well, I'm not sure we'll get anybody on Zoom because I, when I looked, I discovered that when she, it was reposted that we were reconvening tonight, but then it doesn't have the right meeting. It has the one that we had initially.
Oh.
But it was not a continued, I mean, it was a one-time meeting, so. It's open under the regular meeting. I can get any calls about people not being able to log in, tell them to use the township regular meeting to log into Zoom. Okay, folks, it's seven thirty. We'd like to call the meeting, the hearing on PRCD twenty-three oh one out of recess. And we'll go back to that and to begin with. Follow the roll. Mike, you have the list and you pull.
Mike Babler here. Bruce Hamel. Virginia Lewis. Tom Need.
Thank you. I'm looking at the public present and if there happens to be anyone on Zoom, but Virginia has indicated initially that there wasn't anyone signed up. But introduce the members present. Virginia Lewis, Tom Need, and Mike Caverly, chairperson, Jenny Manson, the vice chair, and Bruce Hamel is an alternate. Bruce, since Brittany is not here, you will serve as a, as a member of the commission tonight. And the other township officials present, Mike Cannon, our director of zoning and development, and Jim Steele Smith, a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Bruce McBarry, Bruce is on the Township Strategic Planning Committee. All officials here tonight. With that, then Joe, I'm going to come back to you. And at this point, Joe, if you would thought maybe, I mean, you gave us this nice little summary of all the changes that you made, but I would like to have you go ahead and and walk through those changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was me. Um, was that you? Well, now there's somebody else, it looks like.
Thank you.
Are we recording?
Yes.
It says recording, yeah. Good. Thanks, Bruce. Yep, sure.
Do you want to bring your screen up?
Yeah, I was trying to get in. I, I don't know that I'll need that to share for the list. Um, well, I guess it could. Yeah, it might not be a bad idea.
If you want to log in, I can give you the the number.
Um, I pulled it off the website, so I, I was in the waiting room and then it kicked me out. I think I might be on there now.
Yeah, it's the regular meeting. Sign in. Click on that, it should say.
I admit on here. It says there's two people entered in the meeting room. I think they might both be me.
They have to be accepted, yeah.
Hope not me and somebody else.
Then you can do a share screen.
It's got them all. It's a couple of them just joining now. Okay, yeah, no one's in the waiting room now. Perfect.
Now we get another.
Spoke too quickly.
Joe, one of the things I thought that we should probably do, just to make sure everything with the officials, this document that you've given us tonight does have changes in it.
Okay.
So I would like you to initial.
I'm gonna turn your video off, if that's okay.
You have a copy? Do it. We have an extra copy there. Is that an extra copy?
This is my old copy.
That's your old copy. I was just thinking we have one.
There are going to be some additional things to add.
It's okay.
So I'm not sure it's necessary to initial a copy.
Oh, so you don't, you, you have some concerns that, okay, well, if we're not going to, let's just wait then, Mike. Just wait. In terms of initially, because if we don't, we're not going to go forward with any kind of approval tonight, then we'll wait for the next draft before we have him initial the pages with changes. All right. With that, though, then Joe, go ahead. I just want to make sure that, you know, when we do have a copy that we're going to forward or we get the trustees that we know, because we accepted it as different copy than what we're looking at now. These made changes. And in the past, whenever we made a change in an application, we always initial those pages. All right. So go ahead, Joe.
Okay. I'm pulling up the revision letter, um, just to, uh, to kind of hit on that. Like, did it share screen? Maybe. Showing.
Doesn't want to share.
There, yeah, screen sharing has stopped as the shared window is closed. Me share. All right, I think I got it now.
Looks like you're making progress.
Yeah, it looks, looks better. Just got to keep rid of all the. Perfect. Okay, so, uh, we provided a letter of revision and that's what I wanted to kind of run through. Uh, there's two documents. I have way too many pop-ups. See all this stuff with Zooms blocking my ability to see it on second here. Seemed to make a lot more sense when I was sitting back there. Well, in general, we've, we've made a resuminal. Um, the revisions were a compilation of what was mentioned at the last meeting as well as some responses to, um, comments received, uh, by email. So, uh, we, uh, we didn't cite back to whose comments were what, because there were, were many overlapping comments. Um, but what I tried to do was highlight those revisions in the order that they were posted on, um, in the document. So the page numbers correspond with the reflecting page. So uh, some of these are grammatical and probably not a huge impact, and I won't belabor those, but I wanted to kind of talk through, uh, big picture updates uh, that were included in the plan. Uh, to start with, the development plan itself, uh, we did not redesign the subdivision anyway. Um, the subdivision's still being presented in the same manner that it was before, uh, the same lot layout. Uh, we did make two modifications to the development plan. We removed these, uh, trail connection to the north. And we identified on the plan, uh, a two-hundred-foot setback off of Harlem Road. It was our original intention to have two-hundred-foot, uh, some of that got eaten, uh, when we were getting into the engineering, preliminary engineering process. Because some of the stormwater basins got a little bit larger, so to make up that acreage, they pushed closer to the road. Uh, so in exchange for the lots being a little bit closer, we're recognizing a two-hundred-foot setback to the first house, uh, which we hope would honor at least the spirit and intent of the original proposal. Uh, we're still showing passive landscaping, uh, natural preserve in that area. So I think it's something that, uh, it'll have the look and feel of a two-hundred-foot setback. It's just, uh, that area is being consumed uh, somewhat in the side yard, uh, through thirty-some feet of the first lot and a little bit in the right of way. Uh, the one thing we tried to do was get two-hundred-foot exclusive of all easements, but we do feel like some of that area is going to get eaten up with county-required easements, like sanitary sewer, when and if it becomes available. Doesn't mean that trees would be removed in that area. But, uh, when and if sewer did become available, they may bore in sewer across the frontage of this, this property. So, uh, there are some things that would be consumed in that two-hundred-foot, but it would allow for at least a hundred and thirty-foot of solid screening outside of, uh, easement or other commitments. The, uh, additional comments, uh, so looking back at the site plan, we, uh, we also would like to provide some additional green space. Uh, but getting into final engineering, we understand there could be small, minor modifications to the development plan as we proceed with final engineering. So, uh, we didn't get into the minutia of trying to add that at this time. We're demonstrating compliance, but ultimately the, the goal would be to be able to add a little bit of additional, uh, especially in the area, uh, between the two phases. Uh, so phase two and three, uh, we'd like to provide a greenway connection from the north to the south. So my clients, uh, who might be joining us later here today, he had a commitment that was holding him a little bit late, but, uh, he, he had even acknowledged that they'd like to see a trail connection in between those two phases, uh, and then provide a avenue for people to get to and from the mailbox location, which is located in the central location there. So, um, that modification, we expect to, uh, to come forward. Uh, other than that, uh, I don't anticipate major revisions to the development plan itself. Uh, so we felt comfortable, comfortable with what we had presented.
So that, that trail connection would be between lots seven and eight?
It would. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that trail connection will be facilitated as we get that green space. So, so, um, with the resulting plats, we might be presenting an amendment to you at some point. We just wanted, wanted to understand the impacts on the septic fields, which is probably at the forefront of why that provision wasn't made at this time by our engineer. Um, but bigger than that, we'd like to understand the impacts of what retention's actually being required once the full design's complete, so.
I'm a little concerned that the, uh, the lots on north of Norwood have any active open space available to them. When you took that trail out on the north side of the creek.
Yeah.
Took away their active open space.
Yeah, we could add maybe a passive trail up that way. I mean, the, the idea of a grass trail, I think, could fit in that area. Um, I think the buyer's probably going to be a little bit different buyer, uh, what you're going to see up there than what you'll see on the south side. So they may not be looking for the active recreation as much, um, just because of the nature where they're at. But I think there is an opportunity to add some active.
Like a dog's brawn. I mean, the, the lot itself is not very big for.
Sure.
In north, it's not a great room for walking a dog out.
Sure. I would agree with that.
A big of a trail there, I thought would have been more.
Okay.
Long the power line.
Yeah.
Going down towards, going down towards the creek.
And just not having a bridge going over. Yeah.
Yeah, understood the impacts of putting the, the, over the trail and like across the corset or the cross the, uh, Duncan Run. So I definitely think that would work. Yeah, I, I, um, if there's a avenue, maybe to connect those two rear yards, provide some way for them both, but circular, I think we could provide it. Um, it isn't almost entirely in the floodplain, so, uh, the areas outside would probably be most served for a trail would be under the power line easement outside of the floodplain. But I, I don't think there'd be a restriction that they couldn't do it. Uh, but we could try to identify something on the plan that would call that out and make that a deliberate attempt as a part of this, uh, project. But it might be something we could link them both to the areas under the power line easement. That might be the most, the best served area. I think the power company may end up wanting an access point there off the road just for serviceability anyhow. I think there might, there might be a elementary one there, not a fully established access point, but that might be something that the power company could find beneficial as well.
You think there's a, a wet crossing of the stream?
Yeah, I don't think we'd need to do a, a crossing itself. I, I think it'd be more bene-, because there's so much water in that creek, it's probably not beneficial to do anything back there. I, I think it'd be like, like we were mentioned, probably more better served just to try to find something that gets them active area outside of their one acre. So we, we could, uh, identify a grass trail or something to, to fit that in that area. Along with that, if you got other comments, feel free to throw them at me. I, um, we'll keep the notes here as we go through. The, uh, the next, uh, just in general, we were, uh, trying to note the updates, uh, to the, um, parcel being, uh, both in Westerville and Galena, uh, acknowledging, uh, postal code. Also, I think we, the callouts is repeated throughout here, but PRCD overlay on the AR one. I think, uh, Tom might be part of your comments, but we, we tried to fall in line with that. That felt like it was the best fit. And after counseling with, uh, my client and their, and their counsel, it sounded like that was the way to, uh, to kind of fall in. So PRCD overlay on an AR one district. And, uh, we kept that consistent through the document. Uh, the.
That certainly is accurate in terms of what it is.
Okay, perfect.
Did you uh, have any further discussion about a name change for the subdivision station?
Not at this time. Um, there, yeah, there was some discussion from a fee, uh, feasibility, the estates term came with the larger lots that were originally laid out in the development. Um, so the thought is, as the designs evolved, we may also want to change the name, but, um, the states at Duncan Run may not be the, the most suitable for that. So we would come back to you if there was a com- comment of something that we wanted to revise that to. But as of now, I think my direction's been to continue forward. Uh, at some point when we can't change it or get to the point where we can't change it, that we'd want to come back and have that conversation again. And if there's suggestions, I'd more than happy to take those to Justin and his team as well.
You still don't have the, uh, application numbers I have to put on the form.
Page, page three.
Put that in.
Oh. Okay, so I used the form that was available. I did update your form with the twenty-three and I put it on that one, but I didn't submit it as a part of the packet, because I think when Mike and I talked, I, I agreed, maybe we should just use the one that was approved. But, um, I do have two other forms that we can take a look at, um, that do have that on there, but if we could handwrite that in for now, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the, uh, discussion about, uh, legal description, uh, to update that, we got the references in. There was some discussion about, uh, utility survey easement reference note. Let's see if I can get this out of the way. I think every pop-up on my screen is all on the top of the language. Yeah, and then, um, uh, we noted, uh, yeah, I'm not sure with all the cemetery. Uh, I think a couple of board members pointed out that there is a cemetery actually adjacent to the site, uh, which was contrary to our statement that there were no known burial grounds. Uh, we were obviously not catching that was adjacent to as well. So, um, we did note Harlem Cemetery on Gorsuch.
Can I say that was after when you listed Harlem Cemetery and what?
Yes.
You know, but no other areas are locked up. Um, you should actually enter known before.
Yes. Correct. Yeah, I think that term was in front of cemetery and it probably didn't get carried forward to the rest of the statement, so I'll move that over. So, okay. Okay, and then, uh, that's page seven, page eight, uh, we got into, uh, adding some references, uh, delineation to property with what it would become, permitted uses. We listed out limited home occupation. Uh, we called out a lot frontage, uh, at sixty feet. Um, there wasn't really in the PRCD, there's no stipulation for frontage. Uh, but we did want to call out a minimum standard there, measured at the right of way to make it clear that we weren't measuring the hundred-foot at the right-of-way line. Uh, the hundred-foot would be measured at the building setback line. So, uh, sixty-foot would be a frontage, an additional requirement above and beyond the PRCD text. Uh, but a hundred-foot, um, is actually called out in the text as eighty, nineties, and hundreds. Instead of that graduation of differences, we're just saying all of them would be over a hundred, a hundred feet. So most of them actually are much larger, as I think some of the board pointed out in their comments as well. I think our average is about one forty uh, for frontage, but we, we're stipulating a minimum of one hundred. And that does get us compliant on the two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac uh, to make sure that those were compliant with that standard. And then I debated on lot depth. Um, the discussion was, we kind of wanted to honor the three-to-one ratio that most codes find, uh, appealing. Uh, but in this case, because we had some lots that were in the three-fifty range, uh, we stipulated a maximum lot depth of three-sixty. Doesn't mean that we're looking, as you can see on the plan, we're not trying to create hundred-foot wide lots with three-hundred-and-sixty foot of depth. But in general, we wanted to try to create a good balance there. So, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty seemed like the best way to stipulate it. I think there was some comment about maybe noting the average. Uh, I felt like that might be a challenge, especially for lots that have multiple frontages. We just didn't want any confusion. Ultimately, we want to try to mandate the actual minimums for what we're trying to create here. So you're approving the plan as a part of this too. So you're by default approving those minimum or averages. But we feel like that might be the best way to present that going forward.
Okay, I think you, you had mentioned average when last time and, and.
Yeah.
But that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I know it. I, uh, I may have brought it up, which is where it came from, but after the debate, we, uh, we figured out that that was probably not the right way to put that into code form. So and the way this is being read, this is code for this development. So we want to stipulate the minimums or maximums, rather, in this case. Along with maximums, we, we noted thirty-five-foot building height. We acknowledged the, that was, you know, copied from the code that we just, uh, carried forward, but we'll honor the thirty-five-foot maximum height.
Uh, before we move on, uh, under E building setbacks, adjacent dwellings must have a five-foot variation from neighboring dwellings.
Yes.
Um, I would suggest you put in a minimum five foot. So you don't lock yourself into exactly five feet in every case. Perfect. Any problem?
Anything else on page? Page eight? Okay, page nine, uh, we got into phasing. Uh, the discussion here, um, there might be a clarification after reading this and submitting it. Um, fifty percent, at least fifty percent in each phase. Um, the idea is to catch and make the developer commitment that there's always going to be fifty percent open space in the development. That last phase might not have fifty percent. So, uh, while the statement says that, we'd like to offer that the, it would be with the exception of the last phase, which is going to catch the rest of the open space and make sure we're made whole, but uh, it may not be in that last phase. The last phase might be forty, thirty percent open space because we already overplatted on the addition, on the other sections. So, um, just to clarify, we attempted to make the grammatical correction, but in noting that, we realized that that commitment may not be honorable in the last phase. We can make it honorable, but it might put partial lines for the open space and odd spots. I think the spirit and intent of it is that we're trying to create more than fifty percent open space as we go, so we can continue to provide that. So if the board is amenable to that and we're making revisions, we'd like to, uh, on page nine, offer, uh, exempt the last phase from the standard fifty percent open space. Um, we're still going to meet fifty percent overall.
And I would think you could probably word it in a way that you were still committing to fifty percent in phase one and phase two. And that when you reached phase three, the overall open space would, would still be fifty percent.
Yeah, we.
Even if that last phase was less.
We can reiterate. Yeah, I think that, that definitely is, that's the spirit and intent behind what we're doing. I, I didn't catch it. And as we were talking through it, I thought, well, shoot, yeah, that's going to be a weird. We could end up having some parcel lines that follow some weird spots just because we're trying to meet that every time.
And I did notice that on the third line where you inserted the word it's.
Yes.
You didn't delete the word the after it. But while we're doing grammatic.
Okay. Gotcha. Um, we, uh, stipulated, uh, all attached dwellings, uh, shall have a minimum attached two-car garage, a minimum, um, uh, four-hundred-and-eighty square foot, uh, square footage, uh, with a panelized garage door and not opening to face the road. Um, I think we're open to that as a commitment. The discussion was if the garage is set back excessively from the road, can we do a front-load garage? Um, so if the board would be open to it as well, we had to, maybe did not have that discussion in detail. Last time we did talk about the spirit and intent was to eliminate snout houses where the garage protrudes in front of the house. But if you feel comfortable saying, hey, it has to be at least five, ten feet behind the front of the house, uh, we'd like the option of some, a front-load garage i- i- on occasion. The intent is not to create the snout house look, which is garage door, garage door, garage door, so.
But, but we would have a, a long drive to get to the house.
Yes. Yeah, and we thought, especially with the septic fields, there might be some constraints where it'd be, make more sense to, to go straight in versus eating up some of that area. So if you're open to it, maybe a ten-foot deviation from the front of the house, as long as it's ten feet behind the front plane of the home, is that enough to justify it or?
I think if you look at exhibit K six, it shows something like that and you can barely see that there's a garage over there, so.
Should, should we leave our, can we leave that to the discretion of the, uh, zoning director?
Yeah. I'm game. I, I think the question would just be, is there a quantitative answer to that? So as long as it's behind the front plane at his discretion, that's fine, but I, I don't know that, I don't know how you.
How would we define it?
I, I would quantify it with saying it has to be at least ten feet behind the front of the house. The idea is, or twenty feet, twenty feet's a car, length of a car. So if there's a car parked in front of the garage, the car's not going to be in the front yard. So you could say it at least has to be twenty feet behind the front of the house, front plane of the house.
And front plane is excluding porches and things? Is that?
However you want to define it. Now, I think we're just kind of open to it. We're just trying to, we don't know the specific builders yet. We have perspective builders, but the idea is, we want to make sure it's a, they can design something that's appealing. Like you said, there's exhibits in there that still look appealing. So.
I have the idea of the twenty feet, so that even if you park in front of the garage, you still aren't necessarily looking at the car. So I feel like especially in the country, garage turns into storage for everything except for the car.
So exclude, uh, porch. Open porches, exclude open porches.
Yeah.
From that standard, so.
Plane. That would be my, my preference.
Hearing no objections. I have no problem proceeding with that. If there are any concerns about that, just let me know. We'll get that noted. Um, didn't have any concerns about the registration for hardy plank in the way that was noted. So, and then we did include brick in the, uh, statement about, uh, facades. Uh, I think the intent was not to eliminate brick from the conversation. Uh, we changed the roofing to specify metal, copper, slate, wood shingle, et cetera. Focus that conversation and the standards on the twenty-five-year guarantee, warranty on roofing. So, um, that could be proven, uh, with permits to your, your zoning office. Make sure that there, that that is provided as part of the product line. They're cert- certified by the builder. Um, directed revisions on the plan would be addressed by the zoning resolution. I think previously we had mentioned that there was a specific process for amending. We're just saying it's already noted in the text separately where the revisions would happen. So, uh, just honoring the zoning resolution under K ten. Uh, K, K eleven, uh, the final location and design of house numbers, uh, will be determined. We acknowledge that that would be, uh, with the direction of the zoning and, uh, the zoning and development director. To make sure that that's handled there. So, uh, got that incorporated. Uh, additionally, uh, updated, uh, driveways, uh, to include uh, concrete asphalt. Uh, we had some questions. The, the recommendation was to add the word impervious pavers. Uh, I think the thought is, we still want to be able to use standard pavers. Uh, so if it's just to encourage previous pavers to be listed, uh, we'd like to have, um, pavers listed as well. Um, if you want to exclude those, we did exclude gravel and asphalt, uh, not being the majority of driveways in the front yard. So if you'd be amenable to, um, pavers, um, that could be a commitment there as well, uh, to include it is not to be a majority if you wanted to, to do that. If it's a not appealing, but I feel like pavers are generally an appealing product, probably, uh, comparable, if not better than concrete itself, um, from an aesthetic standpoint, so.
That's okay with me.
Oh. I want to note that change. So, uh.
The lighting fixed features fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen, uh, outdoor lighting?
Yeah, I think, I think that was new.
Yes. Yeah, so, um, the, the only one I knew before we get there is the playground. Um, there was some discussion about composite materials, so we, we did permit those. Uh, we focused the discussion in K, K fourteen on maintenance of the playground equipment, which I think was the spirit and intent was just to say that it would be well-maintained. So, uh, would materials be, um, complimented with composite, but that it has to be well-maintained. So we permit both those. Uh, outdoor lighting, uh, there's a section added, uh, to directly address, uh, downward cast lighting and shielded lighting from, uh, from the roadway. Uh, if there's any questions on K fifteen, we can talk through that. But, uh, tried to address the public comments that we received. Spirit and tense, not the over, over light the area and neat lighting would be limited on.
This includes landscape lighting as well, not just lights on the house.
Correct. Yeah, if they're upward lighting, uh, be shielded. That's, uh, shielded to not protrude beyond the house. I guess that'd be a better way to say it. So it'd allow for lighting shielded on the home, but it wouldn't allow for it to be upcast in the sky. Yeah, if they're upward lighting, uh be shielded. That's uh shielded to not protrude beyond the house. I guess that'd be a better way to say it. So it would allow for lighting shielded on the home, but it wouldn't allow for it to be upcast in the sky.
So like they're allowed to shine lights on trees then is what you're telling me?
Uh might might be a little hard to shield the tree that I think the thought is to shield it like at the front of the home. So. It's mainly the if you're gonna if you're gonna allow for shielded lighting, it would typically be directed at something as a feature. Yeah. Lot of times those don't end up getting permitted, so it ends up being more of an HOA issue. You're not typically going to see your zoning inspector probably issuing violations on lighting and it'd probably be an HOA.
Yeah.
So something we can address more detail in the covenants. Um there was some question about the FEMA language. We got that updated. Um updated the codes to uh include subsurface drainage uh as a restriction on page eighteen.
Um Joe, before you.
Yes.
Where you get there. Uh page thirteen.
Thirteen. Page of pictures.
New. Uh well, it's got two pictures on top.
Okay.
Yeah. You gotta scroll down.
List of divergences. Yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, the divergence was added. So you know, I caught that on this page.
Yeah, so that. There were none before. There is one now pretty much at the request of. With the insistence of regional planning and the county engineer.
Correct. Correct.
Um. I understand. I think we all understand. But when you get to the last. Phrase in that despite, so we're talking about. Um. These lots will remain a part of this PRCD final development plan, meaning lots one and two. As regulated here and and governed as part of the HOA documents. Despite being excluded from the duck subdivision plan. And that's not a problem here, but it's going to create problems further on in the document, especially uh uh initially on page twenty. Uh which we haven't gotten to yet, but.
Okay.
As an example of the confusion. Or the inconsistency that it creates. Um no zoning certificate shall be issued for any structure in any portion of a piece art piece CRD for which a plat. Is required. Unless, so I don't know. Um. Two lots, one and two are going to be no plat. I think. So this here on page twenty may not be a problem because we're saying. Um you know, it's not really part of the subdivision plats, or if they're off the subdivision plat doesn't create an issue. But later on in the document, you refer to. Twenty six lots in the subdivision. You're not going to have twenty six lots.
So no plat's still a subdivision. It's just not a plat. So um but within the plat itself, there should be twenty four. So I clear that up. But if there's a specific section you're looking at.
Yeah.
Um I still want to note that there's twenty six in this development plan and the subdivision, but it just may not be a part of the plat.
Right, and I think that. That inconsistency. Um especially in, I think it's some of the HOA documents. Is not is not clearly spelled out.
Okay.
What's you know, what's what's in and what's out, but we'll we'll get to those as we. I just wanted to point out that despite being excluded from subdivision plat.
True.
It's going to have an impact later on.
Okay, if it's the loose term of subdivision, I guess that's include those two two other lots are in the subdivision. They're just not in the plat itself. So but yeah, we can uh definitely address those. Okay. Uh going to page twenty, um the divergences uh.
Uh oh, uh but you were on page eighteen first.
Oh, eighteen. Yeah, I just uh those two, I think we added subsurface drainage um as that last note. And then uh updated for the FEMA. I think those were both just terminology. Wasn't something that was a specific change to the commitments that we were making. It was just. The code sections of both of those.
But when I looked at. Uh item five. The last two words as attached. I couldn't find them anywhere.
As attached in. That's on page eighteen.
So I was I looked on page thirty one to see if it was in the. In the um attachments. It's not on the list of attachments.
Oh, yeah, no, we did not attach it itself. It is referenced on the development plan. So are you looking for the? The actual firm map to be attached. Oh. Okay. We can do that. So the firms referenced on the development plan, I thought the idea was just that we were mentioning that as a part of uh what's going into the development plan. We we can attach the actual floodplain map panel. Um.
That 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 would be good. I so I I added on page thirty one, I added an item nine. Which is the firm map.
Okay.
And then somewhere. At the end of the attachments. The actual map.
Okay.
That'd be good.
We can catch that in the attachments. That's no problem.
And you moved on to page twenty.
Yes. Yeah, so the map itself, um I don't know if you've seen firm maps, but it's probably not going to be legible in the document. Um would there be a possibility we could just use that panel reference? And not attach the physical map unless you wanna.
Is there a way of getting a link to it?
Yeah, uh there's, I mean, the FEMA website, I definitely provides those. Um the and it's through the. Panel number, which is like I said, repeated on the development plan and within the text.
Yeah, I mean, I I it it would be okay with me if you have an attachment that's a link to the actual map.
Okay.
I don't know that we need another. Three by two foot map.
Okay, yeah, I uh I think we may remove the word attached then and just go with the reference. Yeah, and I think we did reference it um it within, so we'll get that um updated. So attach for. Okay. Uh going back, anything else on page eighteen? We're moving on to twenty?
Yep.
Um I'm going to have a question on nineteen.
Yes.
Alan. Well, first wrote in. Just in your own, you wrote over nineteen, and this is the third line down. You ran eight and two from that together as one word.
Okay.
But in twenty one. I I. I'm I'm not seeing um. Since you are planning phases, I'm not seeing that for that one as three page.
Yeah, we did not uh put the the text. Um we we included which lots. Um but because we didn't want to identify the specific boundaries, the open space, because we don't know the drainage improvements yet. I didn't put a phase line on there. Because I'm not sure exactly where it's going to fall. We know which lots are going to be included. We called that out in the text. Um but I did not include it on the. The plan purposely because we're not sure what drainage improvements are going to be necessary as part of phase two and what ones would be required as a part of phase three. So we were hoping for some flexibility. That's why we did not call those both out.
Okay, um.
And do we want to take out the map format? Like if you describe in text. Which lots.
Well, except that that is what is from the zone code.
Yeah, it's a specific code. If we have to call out anything, it'd probably be a divergence, but it didn't seem like it was warning a divergence request unless you. I mean, we could throw a line on there, but I'm not sure that we want some flexibility in where that line falls.
Get that information.
Yep.
That to us for approval for that phase.
Yeah, it would definitely come through for staff review. If you wanted to come back, it'd probably easier for us to include some intent on there. And then we could go back to if there's a spiritual and like if we're. Substantially deviating from that, then we can come back into the board, but. We can show one if it matters now. The spirit and intent is we're going between slots seven and eight. We're going to drop down through that open space. Uh as needed to capture uh phasing and green space that's necessary at that time. So um. Yeah, I guess I'm open to that suggestion. I'm I think uh if we throw it on there, there might be a discussion that there be a a minor amendment to it. I just didn't want to get into um where we had a. We had to come back because we deviated the phase line. Spirit and intent is we're going to include more than fifty percent open space. Just might be that there's more open space long Dunkin' Run and less open space. South side, depending on where that stormwater study puts all the water once we get done with the final engineering on it. So just because we're a little early in the process.
So phase two would be the western lots or the eastern lots?
Phase two would be the western lots running on for the road.
And then the phase three would be the interior lots.
Correct.
And my my reading of this though is that. An an application for development that is applicable for each phase. Has to be submitted and approved. I don't know, the rest of the reading with the number one one.
Yeah, and like I said, I I think a lot of this text is coming from a standard PRD. Uh where you don't necessarily have fifty percent of the site in open space. So we're generally see a little bit more flexible.
Actually, it comes from our our PRCD language, I think.
No, but I'm saying the form language that might be in there, I think is standard of what you'd see in a PRD where you're defining lots. So. Uh again, I I think the spirit and intent of it is that we're providing a phase line by description between those lots. Like I said, we can show that. If that helps you out. But ideally, that line's going to potentially shift because we may have a basin that needs to go into phase three. Uh I'm not sure which basins are going to be warranted as part of that engineering design. We have to account for as we have to account for the water flow that's leaving the site today. Or make it better, right? So we can't make it worse, which we're going to get into as part of that discussion about drainage. But part of that is uh that commitment and that studies um. And preliminarily done, but we we have a. Much further study to go through once zoning is approved to uh define which basins. Are covered which lots and then ultimately phase that.
So Johnny, uh if you you're reading against the end of the second line, each phase shall require approval. Um.
As well as the very bottom of that. Number one one.
Each phase is fresh shell. And it the as built conditions.
As well.
Yeah, I mean, I I would look at at the map that we have. And say both phases are on it. It's just not a separate map that says here's phase two and here's space room, right? I don't know if that. That helps.
Could we add something to this map? The effect of like proposed phase. Division. Subject to. Change based on. Drainage. Studies. Subject to minor change. I mean, I. I don't think Joe's planning on this being like, oh, all of a sudden we're going to. Move it. Seven lots over.
We're likely going to capture a lot of that Dunkin' Run uh green space in phase two. Uh just because of the nature of trying to get phase two in uh before phase three. Uh but. In reality, all that overhead power line easement is going to be the majority of the open space for the next. We just. It seems subjective, so it's a little too early to tell. Maybe that's a better way to say it. So I don't mind bringing it back. I just to go back through the process to identify a phase. That's why we were trying to be a little bit more descriptive in. Making sure that we had more than fifty percent of the open space in phase two um to make sure that was accounted for. And ultimately phase one, because we'd be plotting the open space with phase one as well. Even though the lots aren't included in the plat, you'd still be plotting the open space as part of phase one.
Well, unlike this map anyways. Proposed property property line, potential house like this all has left some room for. For minor adjustments. So can't we just do the same with the phase? Now it's being faced.
Talk and put a hypothetical phase line. Okay.
And some notation on there about, you know. Subject to change based on drainage.
I think I think it's all kind of subject to change within the reason of how you modify. So there might be some stuff that comes for text or for staff review. And if they say, hey, this is widely uh de- deviated from what we talked about the meeting, we're going to be back here talking about it anyhow. So, okay. That sounds good.
Yeah.
Anything else on nineteen?
Um.
I think the statement on twenty, uh not to get ahead, you always welcome to pull me back, but um not the statement on twenty about divergences was more of a grammatical update. So. Uh we did uh update that. A lot of these are text, so uh they were copies and paste of the what was online, but um we're just trying to update those in conjunction with the request. So. And then uh we did have page twenty two um. That uh update uh including by uh was a grammatical change, but I was signifying the forty six uh acres of open space that was concerned but confirmed by our project engineer as net developable acreage. Uh we added details regarding minimum percentages of open space uh to be provided. Which goes back to the um discussion we had previously as well. Um but I think this was further detail. Actually, Mike, I think this is from your comments about maybe how much was active and how much uh is passive. So we provided some more detail about that in the text. Um those are minimums. Yes. Yes, actually, these are new to that. I didn't have them previously in there, so the these are from the current layout. Correct. Yeah. Um.
You identified that the active. Would be like, I'm forgetting now where the lots are, but you identified specific lots that uh. That we see that. Behind and behind those laws.
Correct. It's the it's the centralized green space essentially. That's where, yeah, we felt like active recreation there, but I think the general nature of all the trail um that is a requirement also the code. Um that that is active recreation as well, because obviously we're providing a trail linkage, so we incorporated that into the discussion as well. But there's ample open space there that will be provided. Um active is more of a minimum standard according to the code, so we're not actually calling it out on the plan because it could change in time and. Ultimately, we're not locking in that if the HOA came back and wanted to add a playground, it doesn't sound like the code's to prohibit that. It just needs to be suitable for.
Not expecting that you're going to put it in the playground and now.
Yeah.
The end of the project, it may come later, the HOA may do it, but. It's important to know where it is that it might be going.
Yep. Yeah, so that's why we tried to call out those specific areas. And it's more internal to the site to get away from neighbors to that, just to call that out. I. I think the thought process is if and when development ever continued from the street stub, it'd be more centralized to everything that's going on there.
Nine lots sixteen and twenty two, that's still accurate?
Yes.
Right.
Um. Anything else on twenty two? Page twenty three, uh we updated some terminology there uh regarding adverse impacts of stormwater. On neighboring properties as well as the property itself. So I've got that updated. Yeah, I think that's a code section. It was updated. Um also made an update that a five foot wide walking or bike trail. Um. I think there is some question about the width, right? So we were just demonstrating compliance with the code.
We may have taken out the word asphalt.
We took out the word asphalt. That's what it was. Yes.
Uh the bottom of page twenty three.
Bottom of page twenty three about the perimeter trail.
But didn't Scott Sanders say that? That might not actually get through.
Uh their regulations regarding sidewalks on the street. So um there's isn't, we were asking if that trail would suffice for the trail that they're the sidewalk that they're looking for on the side of the street. Their answer was no, um even if we have.
So you still have to have sidewalks too.
At least one side of the street, we have to have a sidewalk on. Correct. And we can work with them, but the the definition of that has changed. I I think Harlem Estates has a grass sidewalk. Um so it has to be great in such a way that it's doesn't prevent traffic and it's an easement on the plan that says people can pass there if they want to outside of the right away. Most people are going to walk in the street. These are dead end streets and they're not meant to be thoroughfares, so.
And it'd be nice to keep. Sidewalks that kind of the township for for one.
Yeah, now if that street stub connects to six hundred lot subdivision twenty years, forty years from now, they want the ability to make that an upgrade. So that's why they're preserving those as a part of the development. They're not going to let us deviate from it. So they want to make sure those easements exist on the plat. So we'll provide that on the plat. Um.
Page twenty four, the.
Yeah.
Page uh street trees. And. Is the intent here that the street that those trees are going to be selected from the list that is provided within this document?
Yes, the deciduous trees. Correct. I think there's a appropriateness from the vegetative strategy. Uh the goal was that those uh trees would be provided as part of that. Correct. Yes.
That, you know, would, I guess I was thinking that I really don't want to see uh some. Certain type of tree going in there that uh. Just because they're cheap.
Yeah, no, that's not the goal, but I I agree. Um we can we can take a look at that as far as terminology. I I don't think we have any problems specifying those. Um ideas that.
I'm not trying to say a specific one tree, you know.
Right.
I don't want to say one tree only, but I'm thinking in terms of. Looking at some of the trees that are on there, there's some great trees listed.
No. So the homeowners will have their own landscaping decisions for their parcel, right? Those that they could hypothetically take and line each side of their property with our variety. And we can't really do anything about that.
Unless it's prohibited in the code or.
I mean, that'd be great, but that's getting a little nitpicky. So I'm not gonna fight it.
It's not in the code. And I'm not saying, but on here, obviously, that's not something that's listed as an option.
Within the designated open space. Yes, yes. But I'm talking on their on their private land. We we can't.
Private land. I mean, the developer couldn't limit that if they chose to.
Which would be great, but I'm, again, that's really nitpicky.
I think there was some stipulation landscaping had to be approved by the HOA. So I think there might be some discussion about that just in general if it pops up, but it's probably more of a discretionary. It's hard to. It's hard to address all of that in a code, so it's probably more reliable to treat it as an HOA approval.
Well, and again, everybody has different tastes and we're not here to.
Right.
Focusing on the street trees.
Yes.
The thought process was not to line the street with trees. We've had a lot of communities and I think Harlem Township would probably fall in that as well, because I know Genoa, Orange, they don't like seeing trees in the right away. They end up getting in the path of trucks and maintenance, and then they undermine the street and cause bigger issues around the storm drainage. So generally, they have to be outside of that. The challenge that we run into is. When we do subdivision design, the county requires a twenty-foot sanitary easement on one side of the street and a twelve-foot Delco water easement on the other side of the street. So. We can, we're stipulating here that they have to be within twenty-five feet of the right away line. But the thought is they're probably gonna get lined along the edges of those easements, but we also wanna provide the avenue that they can be clustered in certain areas where they might provide a good block of the vista. Such as an example, I know we talked to the lanes about the view up the drive in general. There's a couple lots right there on the corner that have ability to be screened, so that when you look up the street, you don't see a house, you actually see vegetative screening. So. The thought is a lot of those street trees are gonna be clustered to help limit the impact of the homes. So developer will have input in that as development occurs and they continue to make recommendations. We'd like to see some street trees planted in this area. But the easements are gonna dictate that if Delco flips their easement. We, it's hard for us to say, hey, exactly what those are gonna look like until the plat's approved. But once the plat's approved, we can. Cluster those on plan and give some idea at least where they're intended to be. But I didn't wanna show soldier course trees all the way down through there, because that's not the spirit and intent of this development. Don't want it to look like a subdivision. We don't want it to look like a natural, natural development.
What we're looking for.
Perfect. Okay, so that with that being said, the last one and page twenty-four was no principal building in the district seat thirty-five feet. That was previously forty-five feet. So we made that update. Attachments, I think there was some discussion about putting page numbers on it. I've had bad experiences with that, so I listed the number of pages in each section. I do think at a courtesy, we'll provide a office copies with tabs. So when we provide a final document to you guys, it will have each attachment called out on it. So it's easier to get to those attachments very easily for reference, but understanding. We're getting close to that, but not there yet. So we'll provide that as a get there. The the next section's about covenants. I'll say we did what was pretty much asked here, didn't make substantial changes. I think credible, the covenants, there was some discussion about cross references. Just the following updates to the covenants, the HOA covenants in general. So pages three through eleven.
Following updates, the covenants.
Here on page twenty-nine.
Okay.
Given some of the problems we've had with. Our only other PRD. I'm going to suggest in several places adding some additional information. Like this page twenty-nine, you've got a box set up. Where the HOA is responsible for maintenance of common open space. I would like to add something like the HOA will ensure that. All such maintenance compliance will be final development plan. Any proposed changes will follow the procedure outline in section thirteen oh nine.
Okay. Yeah, I think the spirit, I'm with you. Spirit and intent, obviously copying the code in there is we're gonna comply to it because it's a part of the document. But yeah, I don't have a problem with that in that language.
Well, this is just a question I've had on the list of the. Woodland reasons, maybe my thing is a lot of them too. The second page, move the bottom of the note side. The American Elm, and what's the potential BEB? What is BEB?
This is on which page?
Page two of the.
And ED.
Woodland reasons from.
Well, Amy's not here tonight. I know you're more the expert in this category, but I see D E D. Potential D E D. Oh. It might be in reference. It says potential D E D. Is it in reference to some of this text up here?
Most of the others are talking about deer reasons and stuff. But.
Yeah. Justin's gonna see if he can find us an answer, but I. I was thinking it was reference to the deer again, but. I'm not sure. Right.
Other, there were a couple of things that you had expected to provide us.
Yeah, I have a verbal. I was hoping Amy'd be here to talk through the legislative, but I can provide some updates on drainage. So as far as a written commitment, then, you know, so.
Dutch elm disease.
Maybe subject to Dutch elm.
I think they've come up with some. Asian variants that are. Immune to the fungus. And they're trying to read them back into the North American variants. It's.
Yeah, that's.
Right. It's right on the edge. I don't think they've got.
And again, these kind of, these are the plants that were native to the site. So that was kind of the discussion was we're trying to go back to what's what's native. So might be a discouragement for a homeowner when they pull that up and see. The. Sounds bad. So. In line with drainage, I wanted to talk a little bit about that. So the Ohio Drainage Law, we talked a little bit more in detail about how the preliminary stormwater. Calculations are completed. So the engineer, our professional engineer in this is done a preliminary calculation of the location where water leaves the site. So the the basins that are shown are the natural, for for natural locations where the majority of water leaves the site. They've also sized based on the existing capacity of water that's leaving the site at those locations. They've run calculations to determine that based on. Traditional design of. A stormwater capacity, I believe, I'm not gonna be able to tell you, each basin is gonna be a little bit different because it's based on how the water depth would be at that location. But it might be six inches of overhead or two inch, two feet of overhead, what they think they can get in that area. They describe a, an area by by delineation on the plan. This area has to be dedicated for stormwater retention or detention. A wetland. So the thought process is that all of these could be candidates for a wetland, could also be candidates for a dry basin or a wet basin. We wanted to provide some flexibility unless the board wanted to say, hey, the front two basins have to be wetlands. I will say the water quality, according to discussions with BRAC, with Nathan Harrington, with BRAC Engineering, did the preliminary calculations. He indicated that we could filtrate water through a. Retention basin into a wetland. And it would have a similar effect of the whole whole area being treated by the wetlands. So there's some ability here to have some design. Maybe creativity, but the goal was to not have all four basins be wet basins that hold water and try to encourage plant life. So. We've engaged Mark Dilly, mad scientist out of Westerville, who will be doing the final design. Once the plan is identified, this is the areas to be treated, he'll help us assist in finding out which of these four basins need to be tied to. Two, phase two, and in line with that, what the ultimate design would be. It's a very detailed study, so it's not something I could sit there and say, hey, we're definitely gonna come out of this with all four of them being. Two inches of water, standing water at all times or whatever it would be, but the spirit and intent is to not have standing water be a visible component of all of the basins. So. I don't know if that answered the question. I know I saw that in a few of the comments that came back from the board after the public meeting. I know we had that discussion last time. In general, all of the design, we can't increase the flow of water. We can't increase the rate of water leaving the site. We, any increase in flow has to be trickled at a same or lower pace than it's leaving the site today. The challenge that typically comes in is, as Amy had mentioned at the last meeting. It typically leaves the site in a more concentrated method. So we're actually held to a higher standard because it's leaving the site in a concentrated manner. We have to ensure that it's not causing any adverse downstream impact. So. In reality, downstream usually see improvement from development that's properly designed and laid out through final engineering. So. We wanna work with this watershed group that you have set up to figure out how we can be more inclusive. Through the design process, realizing that we wanna be a poster child for good, good practices here in the township. But I'm not quite sure what type of commitments we can make to you to make sure that that occurs, other than to say as final engineering gets presented, we have to, according to county standards, present it to your zoning officer. And I will work with your zoning officer and director to make sure that as that happens, we come in and present that to the watershed committee, get any public feedback. Along the way, and would definitely open any comments as we go through the design process. As far as specific plant styles and all that stuff, Amy's tried to identify what's gonna be appropriate in that setting, but ultimately, it's what survives. So. A lot of the commitment is here, we don't wanna plant like plant life that's gonna die. A lot of subdivisions, you see mounds where they plant trees and then the trees die off and they replant them. It's great. They look plush for the first year as everybody's watering, overwatering them, trying to make sure they survive. And then when the developer walks away, everything dies. Not everything, but not to be all gloom and doom, but the spirit and intent here is it's gonna be more of a training and education process as a part of this. Educating the homeowners association as they get appointed, anointed to their seats. That they can actually be able to help represent continued maintenance of these areas. So it might be that. The goal is to reforest the front of the site. We're gonna plant a substantial number of trees to do that. But that's not to negate the fact that the homeowners association should be coming back a couple of years later, ten years later and planting more trees. So we continue to see forestry forced. Forested area. So a lot of the commitments that are gonna be made as a part of this vegetative strategy that goes in is gonna be more in line with, we wanna find out exactly. How this can be done over ten years and its best practices, but it's not something we can really codify. So I've not included a lot of that in our development text. Other than we can include a commitment that we'd work with your staff to continue to maintain that and the homeowners association after the developer's gone should continue to maintain that in a way that's compliant. So. I think in line with the terminology that we put in there, that the homeowners association, I think it was Joni, what you mentioned on page twenty-nine, where we're saying that they should maintain. Compliance with the final development plan. We'll try to provide ways to ensure that that's continued conversation. And I think it's something the townships, hopefully the watershed committee can kind of capture too and say, hey, as we get five or six of these developments under their belt, they might find ways to proactively put the groups together to have. An annual meeting and talk about best practices, invite some of the groups in that might. I mean, Mark Billy'd be a great example. I'd love to permanently retain him as part of the project, but I'm sure he'll wanna continue to be involved to make sure it's a success, but. They ought to bring people like that in to speak and talk about how to maintain those areas. We can have the best of intentions and laying it out, but if it's not maintained properly, it's gonna be. Not maintained properly, so it won't look the way we intended to look. So we talked about adding pictures to the text to describe what a wetland is. I kind of steered away from that and even in the conversations with Amy in preparation for today, some of our discussion was. Is it really right for us to over commit something? I mean, we wanna commit that it's gonna look good and we wanna do the right thing, but I think we need to find a way to actually balance that with code. So we provided code in here and there's covenants and homeowners association to say that it's gonna be maintained. I would just have to work, make sure that that's the case and try to find ways to proactively put that in. So. I didn't have a way. Those were the two things that were, I was left set with was drainage and the vegetative strategy. How do I appropriately respond to those comments in the development text? And I guess my answer was, I don't know how I do, other than those commitments we openly make. Make under whatever oath I can make under to say that that needs to be a part of this project. We'll put it into the text, but ultimately, it's gonna have to be continued maintenance with a. Township in mind, just to say who's maintaining it. I might, I might use Covington and Meadows as an example on old three C. They. They allow burning of the open space and that. Eventually, as they burn it off every year, they burn it off whenever they strategically said it was okay. Some homeowners started mowing into that area. And there was really nobody that could see it other than the neighbors. So when they went to mow it the next year, they realized, well, they can't mow that area because it's now being mowed and maintained by the neighbors, which wasn't spirit and intended why it was designed here. So I think some of it's just active patrolling. And it might be that as you get a few subdivisions under, we figure out a way to actually include the zoning office as a part of that. But the spirit and intent is the developers ultimately responsible upfront. And eventually, the homeowners should take pride. So if they're properly educated, they'll, they'll take pride in why that area should not be mowed, that it's the benefit to them to keep it as no mow or low mow areas that should be maintained in the open space. So I feel like. It's not, it's qualitative statement. It's not a quantitative statement. So if you want me to put something in the text to that effect, I'm open to it. But I think the the idea there is that both of these are things that I've not directly addressed in a zoning text before. Because one is drainage law and we can't deviate from that. We're not gonna deviate from that, other than the commitment to administratively work with your staff through the and your your board. Of your watershed board through the approval process. The other one is. It's gonna go well beyond a year. So the vegetative strategy is layout, educate. Make the plannings that we can make and then educate people on how that should be maintained and supplemented in the future years.
Well, I think that some narrative within the document to address that would certainly be important.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I think I've included some elementary. I just haven't gone into, there's nothing really to say, hey, we're overly.
Very understandable that, you know, it is something that's gonna have. There will be initial plant.
Yes.
But then. That has, that has to be maintained and.
I think we get into the maintenance and preservation areas in the covenant stuff language.
Yeah.
There is. The language needs to be strengthened a little bit in terms of. Not. Interfering with the open space. That's the responsibility of the H O A.
Sure.
We're working our way forward down here.
Clearly. Three years, five years from now. If it's not maintained, it's gonna just be a mess.
True.
Or it will all be mowed and it just look like grass.
True.
You don't want that. Yeah.
And one of the things we have seen with our PRDs, those killer farms, was that. When then he finally came back to us when when things got so bad that there were issues. Nobody even had a copy still of their development plan. And it just caused serious issues. They didn't know what they were supposed to be doing. Didn't understand that they had a plan that they were supposed to be following along with their HOA rules.
Sure.
So. I see, I see a number of places actually in the covenants. Stuff for the HOA stuff that. We can remind them that they still have to follow the development plan.
I think Bruce has a color.
I just, and I apologize if it might already be in there. I don't have it brought up, but would seem to me that. At a, at a minimum, after the HOA is established, that there should be something in the covenants of the HOA that they they are required, the HOA board needs to, on an annual basis. Meet with the zoning commission to ensure that, or the zoning inspector, I don't know who the right person is, but if it's. You know, identified in an HOA rule and those that come on to. You know, identified in an HOA rule, then those that come onto the board in the HOA can at least see that. Oh gee, I've got to schedule annually a meeting, whatever the right date is, call it. You know, maybe February for a plan that would then. Be put into place for planning the, the following fall, so that they could always have that to fall back on. At a minimum, you've got that to go back on the annual basis and read the established rules to know that's there. So it won't get. It, it won't end up being two or three years before it gets bad and then something's. Hard to, to fix.
I think the issue that we had with, with power finds was that. When the developer turned things over to the HOA, he did not turn over a copy of the development plan as well. So the HOA.
So that certainly should all be a, 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 a part of it, but then if, if. If the township also has the original development plan, at least then. The zoning officer has that reference. If, if you've got new HOA board that comes in and go, I don't know anything about this. At least then we can go back and reestablish and ensure they're looking on it on at least in the annual basis. I mean, what I've seen in being a part of HOA and other places is that's exactly what's happened. Everybody forgets the continuity of what should be done. When it was all set up, the first couple of years, it's great. Then the next board comes in and goes, I don't know anything about this. And they don't even know they're supposed to meet with certain people. So just, just.
Yeah. So best practices, a lot of townships will administratively meet with HOA reps and educate them on the zoning process as well. I'll say the covenants are a complete control of the homeowners after they're adopted and they're modified frequently. It just happens. So especially as, as a homeowners association, there's. Nothing we can do, we can change the text in here, but there's nothing we can do to commit that this will be the text 10 years from now. What I would encourage and what I think that already is mandated is on the subdivision plat. There's a requirement that the, obviously the zoning inspector signs, but we could, we could stipulate on the zoning plat. That they have to be in compliance with the zoning. So that terminology, I think some townships actually give us a statement to put on there. So maybe we can work together to find out what the best text is to put in place, but. Obviously those, each individual plat as they come forward would include all the open space because all the open space will be platted. That would give us an opportunity then to, to say that it has to be compliant with the final development plan as well. Make sure that that's planted.
But we're hitting on areas of important point, but. As Joni has identified, the, the one PRD that we have in the community. The developer did not make it very clear. To the homeowners association that they had to stay in compliance with the development plan. And that's an important. Element that needs to make, we need to make sure that that is addressed. And you were just talking about possibly as another way to accomplish that.
Yeah, I was giving that a given, but yeah.
Yeah, right at the beginning of the.
The HOA, as you're saying, they could change it, but they can't eliminate the need to comply.
Right.
With the development plan because that is their zoning.
True.
The zoning inspector would have responsibility if he drives down or someone complains about. Vegetation dying along Harlem Road, then that's a problem for the HOA. They have not maintained that area. So that's, that's important for them to, we need to make sure that in the transfer over.
Sure.
In HOA that that message was delivered clearly.
Now pull, there's probably terminology, like I said, that's required on plats that we can utilize here as well. I'm just. I was trying to signify essentially these covenants might not be the best method, but. I think the best method is probably going to be that plat, because no matter what that plat, they're a part of that subdivision, that plat becomes a part of their record as well.
Also, you know, that might give us more legal standing to say, no, no, you have to do this. But if we could also just remind them at the beginning of the covenant and say. This has to follow the development.
Yeah, I think a lot of times in the purpose statement, we've included that this is a plan and development as a part of this community. Found a final development plan. So I think that statement could be easily be incorporated there. Not, not being an attorney myself, but I'm sure that we can talk to. Clients council and figure out a way to get that incorporated. So in line with that, we made some adjustments to the covenants and we're open to additional suggestions there, but. I think we addressed everything that was in there. There was some discussion about maybe the roof pitch.
Before we get into the. Beat of the covenants.
Yes.
I wrote. Maybe this will come after, I mean, I've got a couple of comments or questions about. The map with the final development plan. Do we want to do that before we? Launch into the covenants?
Yes. That sounds great.
So a couple of things that I, that I just noticed. The engineering drawings always have. Scale along top of the side. So this is in lot one. Location or the potential location of the. Septic fields.
Yes.
A part of it looks like it's in the floodplain.
Yes, it's, it's within the 500 year, which is permissible. According to the. The department.
So. It may not, it may not end up there, but.
Yeah, it, it would hopefully not end up there, but in the conceptual standpoint for a four bedroom home as this was sized, it was laid out in the. 500 year floodplain.
And there's no way to kind of.
It would be the second. So.
That's the secondary system that's in that.
Yeah. And if it does become, I, I think the other discussion we could have there is we are permitted to do secondaries in open space. To get them outside of that restriction, but conceptually to ensure that. It was feasible as a lot. We, we demonstrated it there, but there, there might be some possibility, especially in the open space further east. That we could allocate an area under the power line easement where septic potentially could be installed, but. That also.
For lot one.
That can directly conflicts with the health department standards. So we were trying to find the most suitable area there without getting into that area if we could.
Alright.
This is permissible.
To kind of shave. Some square footage off of lot two until.
Yeah. So these are envelopes. There, there is some possibility there that we could modify lot boundaries, but I think more. In reality, these are a traditional septic system. In reality, only one system's built, so it's likely the one uphill. And then sewer would likely be available by the time it hit that secondary. That's one. The other discussion item here is they, they. They have to fit within these envelopes, but this is not the entire system. So.
Okay.
I think at the time that it gets designed, there'll be discussion about keeping that probably as much as we can outside of any type of. Down slope area, whether it's a 500 year floodplain or whatever it is. So. But these are schematically shown and they will get adjusted. So I might say that first. Yeah.
I noticed it.
It might be that they get split in half and. Might be that their drip systems, mounds, I think specifically tried to not do mound systems, everything's underground. But it could be that it ends up being a drip system or some alternative system.
Which is smaller.
Smaller. Less impact, shorter.
The other thing you said is maintaining the tree line along Harlem Road.
Yes.
And. What looks to me is like. The detention pond reserve be the one on the southwest corner.
Yeah.
Intrudes into that. And so you're going to be able to see through there where we're trying to create a buffer along Harlem Road. And I don't know if it has to be that large or if it can be shifted to the east.
It likely won't have to be that large, but part of the discussion we did have was that these, if they're designed as wetland, are going to have vegetation in them. And it's not likely that we're probably going to want to see trees in or around those wetland areas anyhow. So even if we pulled back the format of it. It might be that we want to allow that to protrude a little bit so you can actually see the wetland from the road. But there's no, if you look at where the dark gray shades are, the actual housing pads. It's likely not going to be screening individual homes back there. So the thought process of we're actually exposing a greenway. That'll protrude east across the site. So it'd be quite a ways and over the hill a couple of times before you get to the first house that's actually visible straight, straight shot through there. But yeah, I agree vegetatively, we're probably not going to want to see vegetation right up on those wetland areas anyhow. It'll be a different type of vegetation, not the reforestation that was identified. So I think Amy tried to account for that in the schematic that she put together. Where she identified the reforestation across the front of the site and identified this area as more wetland nature plants.
Got you.
But yeah, you're, you're probably 200 feet to the next house north and the septics are going to be downhill from the home. So. They're all going to be in the rear yard of those houses. So it's not likely that we're going to be directly screening anything. And it can't, can't typically put playground equipment or anything like that in a septic area. So. A lot of those yards are going to be for grass maintenance, but not necessarily something that's going to be active recreation or anything that you'd want to screen. No garden sheds or stuff like that. That's going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. So design comment, but I, I definitely get, I, I had the same comment. I said, well, we're taking that one a little closer to the road, but then I realized them being wetlands, it's a little bit different design. And in reality, these ponds end up usually when they get into wetland design, they try to not make them look like the engineers do. They end up trying to get a little bit of curvature and creativeness to them. So. I think some of that hopefully gets fixed in the field.
Maybe it's probably the topology, the topography, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the only option might be mound, but I, we were trying to stay clear of mounds there too. So.
Yeah.
It didn't seem like a, there's a gas line in front of it. There's, there's a lot of one right there. But hopefully it's, it's prettier than it is today. It's a bean field and cornfield. So.
I know we had a, a couple of couples from. The west side of Harlem Road, just opposite. Where road A comes out and they were very concerned about what that the frontage was going to look like.
Yeah. And I did, I will say I met with the, the lanes and we'll continue that conversation. It was very helpful conversation. I can't claim that we addressed every issue, but the thought process was that we're trying to provide a, a design that's conducive. They had, they actually had me lay out a conceptual layout for them just to understand that if and when anybody ever did build in their front yard. That they wouldn't have a direct shot of this road. And the schoolhouse lot, we did confirm this. This is directly across from that schoolhouse lot where it's not likely to see development. It's likely to be back in the wooded areas of that site. So it'd be further north from this road. And then their drive comes out opposite of the reforestation on the back of lot 26. So there was some discussion that they're not going to hopefully see that, but. Yeah, we're, we're trying to continue those dialogues. I think we're meeting next Monday on site to talk further about that too. So. Just to give them some reassurance that we're not creating a thoroughfare in their front yard. But in, in line with the street trees, we did talk about the west side of lot 20. It'd be a good time to talk about it while it's on the overhead, but. As you look up the street to not be seeing a, a house as a vista. That the west side of lot 20 on that corner would be a good spot where we potentially identify street trees. After all the easements are placed, we could say that might be a way to where we would want to cluster some street trees to actually give some aesthetic to. People that are driving in on, on road A. Row at A, row at A.
He goes. What's the calm? I'm sorry, you're talking about a cluster of trees on the west.
Yeah.
Lot 20.
Yeah, lot 20. Yeah. On the west side of lot 20 where when you're coming up the road, you kind of have a plain view of the side of that house. That'd be a good example. We were talking about trying to get green space in there. It's going to be a lot easier and, and more practical to probably just create that as a, a place where we can plant a substantial amount of cluster of street trees. To help screen the lot. So. That could be a part of the individual design as we move forward phase two.
And, and would you do the same on the southeast corner of lot six across the road where traffic coming from the other direction? From the, from the traffics. The gold sack.
Yes. Yeah, I think that'd be a similar, correct. Actually, that's, if you recall, that was my discussion was maybe between seven and eight. We had talked about potentially adding some green space. We, we're talking about some of that flexibility down the road. If we say picked up some of the lot area on the back of lot seven that we maybe create a corridor down through there. So. Those are things we'd like to look at as we proceed. It's. It's, it's tough because you go through the zoning process. You want to be as detailed as possible, but I'll say the road forward is months of review. And the practicality is we want to try to get some more green space where we can get it. So I'm typically involved in the engineering process mainly for that because. As we get opportunities and I start seeing flexibility in lot design, we can start saying, hey, let's squeeze a little bit of green, more green space in there. Create a little bit better looking green corridor where it bottlenecks between. 19 and 20, the green space there, even trying to just smooth those corners out. Once we know for sure what the lot layouts are going to. Look like in final engineering, we're going to have minor adjustments. So. It's not likely the plat's going to look exactly like this. It's, would come back to you with as built for that reason. So.
And that's where you plan on putting the post office? I mean, the, the mailboxes?
Mailbox, central mailbox. Yes. Yeah. The Duncan Run Post Office.
Let's have a mailbox.
Yeah.
That'll be for the 24 houses here and of course up here at these folks.
Yes. Yeah.
Fellow happily.
Yeah, they'll typically. Those typically still ask them to be jointly posted, but.
Question go down here and Kalina up there.
Anything else on the development plan while we got it pulled up?
We're up to the covenants.
Alright. Yeah. So going, going back to the covenant, some, some of that discussion. I, I think we, we can put language in there. We're trying to be 100% amenable to comments that we receive. The idea is not to hide anything from future homeowners. But we also understand that they're semi in control of this document. So it's not a guiding document on the development itself. Your text is. So we rely on it because the zoning officer doesn't always want to enforce some of these nitty gritty details. And you don't want to spend tax dollars to do that. So we provide something that's a high quality. So make sure that this is the example what's going there, but. There'll be minor modifications to this as they go through the, the final details with their. Attorneys and final reviews, putting it in a legalese. What I advise is making sure the township always has a copy of the covenants. So we can make sure those are available as the plat gets presented. The covenants typically are recorded before the plat. So we can provide those when the plat signature comes through and then ultimately the developer controls the HOA until so many lots are sold, but. At the point that an HOA is appointed, typically try to contact the township as we did with Harlem Estates. Make sure you're aware of who the new officers are and make sure that. There's an introduction there so that those people are introduced as a resource for the zoning officer as well, because they're going to be a big part of. You get complaints. Nice thing about PRDs is you can pass it off to the HOA first and see if they can get it taken care of. And then. I always, I always liked that as a zoning officer, PRDs are usually a lot easier. If you get a junk car in a PRD, nobody wants that. So. Just pass it off and see, see if they can get it taken care of first before you have to spend township resources trying to address it. Lots of Karens, right? We'll promise, I'm sure there's probably at least one out of these lots that Karen, right? You'll, you'll have somebody that'll take care of it.
Each one might be a good place to insert. Like a section C needs. Saying something about the conditions and requirements set forth in the final development plan over the P O C V over the monkey and deer too. Including any modifications for the. A D C as specified in section 13.09 of that plan.
So kind of as a disclaimer? Okay.
Is another reminder. We cannot have two reminders.
Yeah. Yeah.
Although I didn't find an exhibit A in my. Under, under unpaid for one there.
Get on the site plan, attach you to appropriate here in this exhibit A.
So. That was to address the comment about duplication of old maps. I removed all of the old maps with the idea that we're, those are going to be placed back in there, but I, I tried to highlight that in the letter. The, the challenge is there's always a change. So if we go and drop it into all those sections, it's going to be a continued maintenance nightmare. So. Right now I've, I've removed them and I just indicated that those will be placed in there, obviously at the time that the plan's approved. But yes, I did remove that deliberately to address, I think that was your comments, was your right comment on that? Might've been some, somebody. Oh, you didn't comment? Somebody commented. I was trying to remember who did. So. Yeah. But we tried to address that just by removing them all. So the final development plan's there and it'll be reiterated across those pages. When, when those documents are getting, already be recorded.
So getting back to the. The. The details of the subdivision plat. And whether. There are only going to be 24. Lots on the plat.
Right.
Six.
Correct.
So here you have under A. As the same or numbered and delineated in that plat. Which is going to become a. I, I, you know, I mean, you're talking about lots one through 26. Under background number A.
Yeah.
And under B, you're talking about all applicable to all of the lots within the subdivision. I don't know how you. Slice that.
So the subdivision itself and the covenants are going to be inclusive of one through 26. I'll say we'll go through and filter out references to the plat. But I, I've not had a situation like this, so it might be something we just need to rely on an attorney to figure out exactly how we know lots one and two. Are going to be excluded from those statements, but also inclusive of the entire document. So. The idea is they're, they're included in the covenants. They're just not. Uh, the idea is they're, they're included in the covenants. They're just not.
References part of the.
Yeah.
You're saying that. They are or, or not, they are part of the subdivision, but they're not part of the subdivision plat.
Correct. Yeah. So subdivision law, uh, ORC, higher rise code, seven eleven subdivision. These are subdivisions. Lot splits are subdivisions. They're just not a subdivision plat. So it's uh, it's a minor. It's no plat approval subdivision. So it's still a subdivision. It's just different method of getting them recorded.
The point that I think and I'm getting a little bit confused at this point now, we're referring, listening to you, sounds like we're talking about two subdivisions. One of twenty-four lots and one of two lots.
No, it should be one.
This whole thing.
Yep, one subdivision.
One subdivision.
Yeah. So the covenants, I guess in draft form, again, draft form, um, we're trying to be inclusive of everything. Uh, the goal is not to include, exclude those two lots. So. Um, they'll be included in the recorded covenants. Uh, we just might have to work on the legalese on how to reference that. Correct. Yeah, but we can make sure that we note that in legal council before it's adopted. There's no real public review of the covenants past this process. So. Um, maybe we can work with the zoning officer as well, just to make sure again, we're going to provide those as we're going through that process and final engineering, but. Maybe we can have some discussion about how that's going to actually, when it gets recorded to make sure that uh. At least you guys had a chance to see those. So I'd like to be as open as I can with you guys, at least share things as we go through this process.
It's important particularly too, thinking about people who purchase those three lots. They're a part of this. That common space behind them is to be maintained by the HOA.
Correct, yes.
They need to be a part of, and if it's not being maintained properly, they're going to be the first ones to notice it because they're, it's their backyard.
Correct.
And they would go to the HOA to get it addressed or they'll come to the zoning inspector to have it addressed. And that's why it's important. Yeah. Well, what you're saying is you have to work on the language and get that set up so that it will be legally bonded.
Yep. Yeah, it, we asked for the divergence. Uh, I will say. It makes more sense to plat those two lots. We've asked the county uh, right now. You got two offices that are just saying, just make them happy and we'll be happy, but both of them are saying two different things. So. There might be a possibility we come back and plot these two lots because that's the easiest way to create these. Um, I would think that that's the easiest way. It doesn't cost my client much more. Time or money to go through a plating process that versus the NPA process. I think it actually costs more money to review. I haven't done math yet. It could cost more money in review uh, to go through and do an, a no plat approval lot split than to create an additional phase of a subdivision because. The engineering plans are already being reviewed and everything's already being taken care of. So. Um, we can ask as a part of the preliminary subdivision supplemental, is there a way we can get through this? Without having to go through a whole entirely separate process to create some fuzzy language. So.
Because there's no, there's no road connection.
Correct.
What I read.
Yeah, but of the subdivision, I, I guess the point is there's subdivision plaques that have not included roads and phase one would not include a road. So the, the, the bigger question we just have is. Why can't we just call it? Maybe it becomes the estates of Duncan Run and we rename the two south to make that issue better. So. I think we'll continue to try to find a solution to it, but it could be that those two lots still end up in a plat. I guess is one way to. Put it, we're just trying to make the county happy right now. So. We want that flexibility, but we might come back to you and say they're a part of the plat. So I'd hate to go through and modify covenants that are maybe six months out. Uh, from fully being the reported.
What's, and then find that they were in fact, okay.
Correct. Yeah, we have a whole process to go through. So it's a learning experience for me as well. And I've been doing this for. Well, ninety-nine started in planning in ninety-nine for regional planning. So it's been a while. Yeah. Been a little bit. There, every year changes. Seems like the rules change. Something changes. So. Keeps it interesting.
Um, are you, you're going to walk us through the covenants or you want us to?
I wasn't gonna unless you really want me to.
Well.
Again, we're going back to the, the type thing. You're talking about no builds on, or Mr. Jones. And we don't have anything shown.
Correct. I think the entirety of the open space would probably be no build, but no disturb that's referenced in there. Is that from a prior project that I'm sure? Yeah. So it might be that you'd want the, the Duncan Run floodplain to be limited and something like that, but. We've not delegated those areas, but the developer is going to find some interest to put those in place. That's why they're in the covenants. So. It's not governed by your zoning, but it might be something that they want to put in place to ensure.
Other areas are, are in mode and I'm. Probably sprayed. And some areas. Can't have anything done to them.
Yeah. So can't be contrary to the final development plan, but some of those areas in the floodplain, typically the developer would be interested in having noster. Unless you want to make a commitment to just remove it, but I would typically see it if my clients interested in protecting the property values within the development by saying. To a future land homeowner, nobody's going to mess with your backyard. So um. Only reason I say that might not spray is probably don't want them down the floodplain area spraying. So. There might be areas that we want to identify on the plat, like the hundred foot setback from Duncan Run. You might want that area to be no disturbed. But usually that's stuff that we get into with the plat. So they'll end up showing up on the plat. Um, this will likely get turned over for ditch maintenance to Delaware County. So there'll be a ditch maintenance program that gets established. They might identify as a part of that ditch maintenance program that there's certain areas that they'd like to see with restrictions like that as well. Get into some townships where it's, you're not.
How long does it get considered natural open space? If, if we're grassing, you know, mowing grasses and trimming and raining or whatever.
I, I think I hear what you're saying. Um, we make a commitment that they're not going to be regularly mowed, but there is the discussion about maintenance. So uh, whether it's burnt, open spaces burn or it's mowed annually, there's still some permissions for those. I'm not sure that I'm answering your question. I will say a lot of subdivisions, what I was going to say was uh, a lot of times these end up on private lots. Um, these restrictions will get on a private lot to guarantee that two homeowners aren't going to have a conflict in the future of say their. Uh, homes face each other, garages face each other. There might be areas of the site that are listed for no build. Um, again, some flexibility that developer might ask for. So that's why they're typically in covenants. But if it's. Some homeowner or some townships do require no disturb, not typically in conservation based districts. Usually the entirety of the open space is a, a no build zone. And then. With the restriction that no disturb might fall in those heavier preserve areas like the floodplain. I don't think we can commit to anything. Unless, I mean, there's a specific request of it. I'd hate to remove it from the model, I guess. And I think I'm hearing my client say. They'd like to preserve those areas as no building, no disturb zones if they can identify them as part of the engineering process.
I, I don't have a problem with having no build. Urgent woman how neat descriptions including lots of, you know, maintenance.
Yeah.
With some of natural open space.
Yeah. So going back to, okay. Um, so i- in line with your thinking over the open space areas. I'm kind of going back to, we're going to cluster street trees on the corner of the lot. We want to put in a.
I, I were, were thinking about like the, the wetland areas and stuff.
Right.
You know.
And these are more specified to individual lots is what you're saying.
They could, usually that's where I would see these stipulations because open space comes with its own covenants and restrictions. So. I might've been incorrect in stating about the floodplain being a, a no disturber, but they might want to put that restriction on it. Um. But in general, the no build zones are typically on lots. That's where I would see those.
So like you're talking about these lots down at the front, you know, they can't put their shed right where it can be seen from Harlem Road, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah. So typically where a conservation district doesn't exist, um, I would say uh, instead of the. Fifty foot setback for lots from adjoining properties, we would typically say we're going to put a no build zone fifty foot over the back of the lots. That adjoin the neighboring properties. So again, the terminology I think is maybe not. A hundred percent what you see with the conservation district, but I think the thought is, is those could be on the individual lots with the one acre lot. It might be limited areas if you do identify anything I would assume in there, but it might be something that helps protect street trees. Uh, if you want to plant uh, and reforest, say that corner Lot twenty that we were talking about at the intersection. Might be an opportunity to put an easement in there to at least guarantee that the homeowner is not going to go in and tear those trees out. So that's why some of that language might want to stay in there. But that being said, I'm not trying to be stubborn. So. Just might explain why, why it potentially would show up in a development.
Trying to get a little bit of a different application here. We have areas that are the common open space areas. Uh, the no build zones and the no disturb zones, are they uh, ever applicable to those areas? Or are they only applicable to the property that the individual homeowner has responsibility?
I've seen the no disturb zones be over open space. I don't think I, I mean, naturally a uh, HOA space is going to be platted as a no build. So the entirety of it is typically a no build zone, but maybe not within the terminology of what this is. I think this was. I, I might be going too far off, but it's typically something I would see on a private lot. So I think the reason this terminology, it might disappear. If those, these areas aren't identified on individual lots as a part of the plat. I think it's just there as a placeholder. Because again, we've not generated that plat yet.
Some of the lots are, you know, obviously they're, all of the lots have some um, contingency or uh, contiguous. Nature to the um. Conservation areas, to the preservation area. So those locks that are there. They need to know where their property line is in, in the common open space. If they're, we don't want them going out there and mowing into the common open space because I mean, that's what people that all. They go down and mow on Columbus city's, city's property. Well, that's been. Columbus city has begun to do a lot more about that. The law people, the homeowners are doing that because they have a property line and they're not supposed to be going on to Columbus property and taking out trees and. But we don't want that to be something that comes into that mindset of the new property down the road.
Sure.
So I'm not, there, there is some need for some, I guess clarification of that.
Sure.
I think it's because we don't have. The site plan with these zones designated on them like it says here.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's part of.
Why I'm confused on these.
True. And like I said.
You know. Some indication that um. These are exclusive of the common open space or something.
You're, you're, um, so again, the no disturb might be common open space. Uh, with the idea that we want to preserve some of those areas and especially the landscaping. After it's established.
It should be not, not.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it should. I'm, I'm thinking about the possibility of maybe that gets separated out.
Yeah. So typically going back to this process, we're going to present a plat to your zoning officer. The plat's going to stipulate the conditions in the open space and conformance with the plan. We still have mode trails and some things that have to be maintained in that area. So it is hard to say. Eh, once it's done, you know, that kind of the as built might be that. Uh, we've went in there and that trail ends up meandering instead of the straight shot that Nathan laid out on the development plan. So. Um, there's going to be some deviations to it, but we're going to identify those on the plat because. Um, that's ultimately what you do. So the plat, the plat will include a lot of those details. Final engineering drawings will include a lot of those details. Those both are a part of the approved. Subdivision. So uh, I think they help reiterate the final development plan. I think these two probably aren't the best way to enforce those. It's just model language in case the developer wants to put those in place somewhere within the development.
Perhaps uh, something in the, in the definitions article. It will identify the. Dep- a definition for the common open space. And then defining what uh, that is or the terminology that you use. Even the terms uh, you know, no build zone, no um. No disturb zone. Defining what, what those are, maybe that would help. If there's, if it's defined in the definition sector.
Okay. Yeah.
That way it would pull it out of. A potential confusion that the homeowner has a right to go and do something on property that's in the. In the quote common space. It's not their, their individual lot, but rather it's a common space for the subdivision.
Um, I think that's there. Article three, uh, three point one A. Where it talks about the easement for access and enjoyment over common elements. And I think there's maybe some elaboration we can provide in there. But again, I think the two sections that we're talking about. May, may be removed if they're not used. Um, the idea is I think there's some separate restrictions. Maybe we can put in place. So those common elements might be a better. Avenue, but we'll, we'll approach that. I, I don't think either of us, we're, we're saying that's good. Um, just thinking through a legal document. I'm not sure. Yeah. That's the right, right spot off the top of my head. So we'll, we'll work on that.
And I, I think the, the map because of the way it's colored, where the private property is. Is white and the common space is green. Right. It's simpler than it's going to be on the ground.
Correct. Hundred percent. That's a good way of putting it. I like that. Yeah.
And, and I was looking at the trail, use, uh, using the trail as the boundary, but the trail is going to meander, like you said, all over the place. It's not really the boundary between common space and private space. You don't want the trail to be a, a landing.
Straight line.
No, no, it'll, it'll likely meander with topography. If there's saplings and things that need to be preserved, they're going to be preserved. So.
I mean, it should. It should be more interesting that way. So how do you delineate? Private space from common space. And I don't know whether you just put in. You know, even if you put in boundary markers, they're going to get. Down, down in mode and.
A lot of times that discussion comes up with the plat because uh, as we go like a four by four post or a six by six post might be appropriate. Um, but a lot of times um, it, it's the subtleness of it. It's not planning something out, out there that's obtrusive. It's. It's usually some type of small marker. So a lot of times uh, rocks will get moved, but there's other types of permanent fixtures you can put in place.
Maybe a, a kind of railroad marking where you have a, a four by four stone.
Yeah. I don't know if you had anything in mind, what you were looking.
I, I, my property backs up to a city conservation property and I have a conservation easement through it, but. It's a, you know, it's just a little small green plastic, you know, lot marker and uh. That's just kind of designates. I know I'm not, you know, there's a fine line of like where I can stop. Be whacking, but at least that marker is there on every kind of two lots and you s- you kind of see where the line.
Yeah. And that, that reminds me that over on Belts Retreat. Where the city of Columbus bought a conservation easement from the Old Brook Presbyterian Church. There are green markers along the edge so that you know, when you're in, on the belt side and you know, when you're on the Columbus side.
Sure.
And that, I mean, as long as they don't get moved or, you know, I mean, they're, they're there, they're there for a reason.
Yeah, I, I think um, we, we could make some commitments that be in demarcation, but I think the, the thought process is, I, I know. Do you know a land conservation association came up with a standard and said, you know, anybody that's adjacent to us, this is what we want to see. Uh, uniqueness here is it's internal to the subdivision. So if they can identify something that's attractive and it's uniform within the development. It really shouldn't be something that's plainly visible to visitors, but maybe more visible to homeowners just to remind them where their. Demarcated boundaries are. So it might be a low level divider, but something that the neighbors aren't going to say, wow, look at that row of posts back here. That's really impressive. So. Might be something a little bit more subtle than that. A little less subtle, is what are we saying? I don't think it was banned in there. The front yard fence I thought was uh, some discussion, but I don't know that actually made it in. So.
Thought I saw something about defenses.
Did you say there is a discussion in her?
I thought I saw something, maybe no fences in the common space, but.
Yeah, it might've been common space. That might've been where it was. I remember seeing something in there. There's a discussion, a definition of improvement. Yeah, it just says improvements. So wherever the word improvements are used, that includes fencing. So. There's a limitation on improvements, that that would be limited.
I don't know where I saw it.
Oh, that's listed under common elements. So there is a limit, limitation in the common area. Yeah, it says they have to be maintained. Can't be in no build areas. No disturb areas. So duty of hazard insurance on all improvements. So they have to have insurance on the fence. Damage and destruction. Damage and destruction. Yeah, there's a lot of references to improvements, so it's just classified under the improvements category. Anywhere improvements are banned, it's banned as well. Can't obstruct drainage.
You got. The definition here is a lot, and it's lots one, three point six and. Again, making reference to subdivision, so it comes back to getting, very own that language now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's some discussion previously, one through twenty-four was in their subdivision. I, I think the thought is it's one through twenty-six, that's what's being bound by the covenants, so. Uh, we'll figure out how to separate the subdivision plat versus the subdivision as an NPA.
Unless you find out that the county will relent.
Yeah.
They will, then it's all.
Yeah, I've never, never had a situation before, we've been told to do it, I, I have had this. So in Porter Township, we uh, we did a public street. And they asked us to split out the lot and uh, there were no. There was no covenants uh, for the H, there was no HOA covenants, so it didn't become an issue, so. Maybe it's just a little new that we have common open space and we have different things that we need to address and that, so. We'll work on it, um, but I, I do think the engineer's offices, they're open to that discussion. We just need to sit down with them and under, have them understand why the plat's important, maybe. Uh, or is continuity maybe not important, but it's more continuity uh, to allow for us to follow the same process. If we can just separate the phase, include language in there that there's no roads being dedicated in that phase, maybe that'll end up making them happy, but. We'll talk to them about it, see what we can do. It's a pretty simple plat if there's no road involved, usually a one-page plat, so uh, should be a pretty easy plat for us to put forward if they approve that.
Yeah, I hope they will accept that.
Make our lives easier, um. You mentioned something about a Delaware County ditch maintenance program. Where would that, um, all I know about ditch maintenance programs is that they're. A bear to. To organize.
Yes.
And people upstream and downstream pay different amounts.
Yep.
Into the program.
So with a subdivision, uh, it typically doesn't involve areas outside of the subdivision, but if a subdivision's required to be put on maintenance, it's. Typically the improvements that are being made to the drainage, so uh, wetland basins, uh, things that would be put in the path of water. Uh, between uh, source and outlet. Uh, would be put on a maintenance program. They would be similar to a bunch of people signing off, but the benefit is it's created through one resolution signed by the developer, so. Uh, in this situation, because of Dunkin' Run, I expect that they'll ask for us to be put on maintenance uh, as part of the process. Uh, typically involves a uh, about two percent. Two percent deposit from the developer and then a commitment that two percent would be collected from a sum of all the owners. Over a series of years until that pot builds up to where they have enough funds to maintain it without concern, so. Uh, typically it'd have to write a check, you know, I think maybe go back to Harlem Estates is maybe the most recent subdivision we've done in Harlem, but. Um, that one, I believe the fee was somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars that developer paid. And then it was assessed against those. Eight lot, eleven lots, eleven lots, fifteen hundred dollars was assessed, so it was about a hundred dollars a year from each lot that was uh, ended up being put into a pot. And then, yeah, they, they use it to collectively maintain, it's usually an inspection fee. Mowing and maintenance and all that, I don't say mowing, but general maintenance of the open space. Still on the homeowners association, but the ditch maintenance would come in as an overlay. And it's typically an inspection and they might take care of muskrat damage, they might take care of. Uh, an outlet that got adjusted or something like that, but they're not typically gonna go in and trim trees or do.
No, but uh, it reminds me that Keller Pines is having an issue with their. Uh, sedimentation in their. Retention ponds to. Retention ponds. And that they've got, according to what we've been told. The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation, this has forty thousand dollars of. Accumulated funds that they're supposed to spend on. Maintenance.
Yeah.
They don't wanna spend it and they're fighting back and forth, but you, you know, and we want you to dredge the pond because it's, it's filled up. And Delaware said. We don't, we don't, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, so sometimes they don't have the equipment to do what they wanna do. I will say they have certain things, I don't know if they have dredging equipment, but um, I do know with muskrats and things, I've seen them under. Staff employees uh, go out there and actually help maintain that and then they'll just build their hourly rate back. Um, they, they do have cedars. Uh, so if, if uh, say erosion becomes an issue on a, a storm bank, uh, I've seen them go in and do that. Um, but typically they're trying to protect that because they also don't wanna have to go back to property owners and say. We're gonna charge you, I mean, it is the property owner's money, it's just being held in the pot. If they use it, they're gonna have to increase the tax to pay it back, so. Uh, but it's weird that. I don't know, it's maybe a political thing, I guess, maybe that's, I don't, I don't know that situation, but I do know ditch maintenance generally been put there. Because homeowners associations don't always include the equipment or the expertise, so typically they're there to inspect it. Uh, you have downed trees that are blocking water, they'll typically help at least do an advisory and then they'll let people know that we can remove it. But we're gonna assess that back to you over a period of time uh, to help replenish that fund. But typically it's a annual fee, I think, I, I've seen their balance sheets, it's, it's usually like two, three hundred dollars a year that's spent. The rest of it's usually tried to be pulled, so if they ever do need to do something big, they can do it. But I don't know that situation, so, but it might, it might be worth a discussion with uh, Soil and Water District to see why they would be.
Sure, Keller Pines would love to.
Yeah, find out why they're, they would not wanna do that. They might anticipate uh, bigger expense or something like that, I can't speculate, but. Yeah, anyhow, usually.
Open ditches uh, along road sides throughout this?
Yeah, the county's requirement will be that we have a roadside ditch on both sides within the right of way. I believe the cross-section that was provided to us was twenty-eight foot at the entrance for the paved surface and twenty. Four feet beyond the intersection. Well, I believe that's what's been provided, there was some discussion whether we have to put a three-lane uh, two, two lanes out. At the entrance, um, obviously I'd like to try to avoid that, but we can talk to them through the subdivision process to find out details. And we'll have to do a full traffic uh, analysis for them to make them feel comfortable we've addressed that concern. Street stuff adds complication, so. If, if the county didn't wanna see and you guys didn't wanna see a street stuff. It'd be a lot easier to argue that we're never gonna have more homes around there, but they just anticipate that tying into something major in the future.
A question on page nine, if we're ready to move along. So page nine, animals and pets.
Yes.
If this is AR one with an overlay, are we allowed, are you allowed, is anybody allowed to say? No livestock, because I thought AR one, you couldn't touch.
Page nine.
Agricultural things.
Page nine of the covenants?
Yes.
Uh, not under zoning law. So um, getting to covenants treated entirely different than zoning, so that's why homeowners association put a lot of restrictions in place, you guys can't.
Okay.
For chickens and rabbits, no chickens, no rabbits?
I have chickens, question mark.
Typically, uh. Typically, those restrictions are put in place to protect uh, property value, so it's not an anti-agriculture as much as it is property value. People can ask for exceptions to the rules, they'd have to prove that they were complying on your side too, so. Uh, but I typically developers, I kinda wanna see a bunch of chicken coops in a small, small lot, so.
That would not be an issue for the zoning uh, staff.
One chicken coop, just one chicken coop beside the mailboxes and they're community chickens. You go and get your eggs and your mail at the same time. I think it sounds great. There.
Yeah. Page eight, of the covenants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hated having chickens, but I think other people could be allowed to.
Uh, sorry, where?
The, uh, page eight, under six point two.
Yep.
Line, I don't know, it's like eight or nine. Um. Repairing construction, reading open statements. But then abandoned. Where they then bind in.
Yeah, what a catch.
Not yet, but I, I wrote it down, I'll uh, I'll get down there to see it. Okay.
Also on page nine, section six point one six. Uh, water mineral operations, you just need a common between oil and gas. Page ten, section six point one nine. I think this is a, another great place to put a, at the end of that uh, paragraph. Any deviation from the final development plan approved by the Harlem Township Zoning Commission must be presented to the Harlem Township Zoning Commission following procedures outlined in section thirteen point oh nine of the final development plan.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And a good place to work.
We'll, we'll work through uh, trying to find ways to cross over and. Yeah.
There were just a few places in my book. It would be pretty difficult to do this. Cover the title on page eleven. Under seven point three. Line four, it says honorable before of the date. So you can probably get rid of all. And the last couple of words in that same paragraph there. Um, yes, you put hyphens in between time to time and I think they were found on. On two other places used time to time, but without any hyphens.
What are you saying, we might be able to?
I think I found more without. I like the article without.
Fine, done.
Yeah. Page sixteen, section nine point one nine. This discusses conflicts between documents. This is another place I would add again. In all cases, the condition of a final development plan of a PRCD overlay must be approved to.
It's nineteen nineteen, nine, nine point nineteen.
Yes.
Nine point one nine.
Yeah, discussing conflicts between documents.
Yeah. A question for my benefit on page fourteen. Under general provisions. Uh, section nine point one. So the, the covenants. Run for a term of forty years and then they renew for ten-year periods. Unless they're. Terminated. Um. What happens if the homeowners association? Is terminated? After forty years, let's say. What happens to the maintenance of the common space? What happens, I mean, the common space is unsellable, right?
Correct, it's got plat restrictions, so in order for them to dissolve. In most cases, they'd have to declare a recipient and get that approved. Uh, because it's platted. Part of the, the final development plan. I, I don't know that I've ever had that happen. I know we've had uh, uh, association uh, hand over land to public entities. And typically they'd exempt that, um. So if, say Harlem Township acquired it or.
Or like AEP wanted to sell their easement. For like walk, and not sell their easement, but allow their easement to be used for walking past, something like that.
I think, maybe, but I think the question I'm hearing is what happens if the, the HOA dissolves? So, but yeah, I mean, that'd be a similar process, I think. If you're gonna have changes to the plan, they'd have to go through subsequent approvals. It's not uncommon for an HOA to submit a modification or a collective group of residents within an HOA to submit because they wanna modify something. So I don't know, have a good answer for that, other than we hope that doesn't happen. Um, the idea is the HOA, these is pretty hard to dissolve in HOA. I mean, they have a lot of obligations, funds that are put aside. And uh, it'd take a hundred percent participation of the residents. Uh, to dissolve it, plus it would take going through those approval processes to figure out how, who's gonna receive the property. A lot of times they're formed as a five oh one C organizations. And when they're fired, formed as that, they have to be transferred to certain entities. So you have instances where like Genoa Township's land conservation or preservation parks might be suitable recipients. Uh, for certain properties, probably. Genoa may not get involved in Harlem, but you may see groups like that even expand to say Genoa Harlem Land Conservation Association, so. Um, yeah, down the road, you might see a collective co-op that wants to own and maintain an open space. Maybe the township collectively approves that within the development plans, but. I don't know of any plans to do anything like that right now. But if, say homeowners, they need some funds, so. They usually pay into groups like that, if they, if they adjoin the open space, they commit to be members and pay obligation to funds. So could be an opportunity to form a co-op, maybe the watershed committee wants to form a co-op.
The next section below that, nine point two amendments. Would be another good place in the end, the writing, uh, amendments must be submitted to the Harlem Township Zoning Commission or zoning director for any compliance with the final development plan. Use of the PRCD. Sounds like we should just make that a footnote on each page. There, there, there are places where, you know. Relates to what they're talking about in, in these sections.
So generally, uh, I think my response in the letter was we try not to cross communicate. Something we can talk to the legal counsel about, but um, I think part of it is the stipulations and. Uh, making sure they don't take away from the effect of other sections, so if we include it in one section, is there a reason it's there and not in others, we just don't wanna. Uh, usually the less opportunity to be litigated on anything is usually a better thing, so something we definitely wanna talk to the council about, so.
I think you've gotten the point though, that we, we want to make sure that.
Yeah.
That's still referenced, so if you've spoken to legal counsel, then I, I have a feeling we're good.
I think generally, I, I'm just thinking back to other associations, uh, we generally had signing parties where people get involved and they sign the covenants as a part of. Or they're sign acknowledgement of the covenants as a part of receipt, so there should be a general blanket statement that's provided that says. Obviously, the final development plan would be a part of that, so I think that might be even a supplemental document that comes in the future that says, hey, as homeowners buy into the subdivision. But definitely on the zoning permit, that might be a good opportunity right there to let people know. Hey, you're bound to HOA covenants, but you're also have to be fully compliant with the final development plan. But once those officers are elected. That's when the real schooling can happen, because then you got somebody that's elected president of the HOA and you can tell them that. Firsthand, you have to comply to the final development plan, but I think we can try to find ways to include that subtly too.
Well, a couple of other, yeah, a couple of other cleanup items, um, page twenty. Second line down. Break the rewards petition and sign. Page twenty-four. Under notice. That section to the notice, the last line of that section separates the words unless and if.
What was the patient on that?
Twenty-four, it's uh, section two notice, last line of that term there.
And also that same page, section three, here that is. Line seven of that paragraph. Separate the officer. And the line below that. Um. Read show, shall be deemed satisfied if we accused. I think. Appears after the meaning. Page twenty-five. Under section one, this will here, separate upon thee at the end of that first line. Section two, depositories, second line, separate out at the end of that line, in one. Page forty-six. Under section six, from section eight. Uh, third line, or second line first, um. Capitalize code of regulations. Capitalize proceed. Uh, next line down. Uh next line down, uh towards the end of that line, please show be made available and then made available. That's all the the cleanup stuff I have.
Joni, if you happen to have a red line copy of that, I would love to get a hold of it.
The soil survey?
Directly copied in there.
Yeah, if you happen to have those marked up that you can send them, that'd be great. I tried to note all those down, but um thanks.
And Joe, given what you've heard tonight, I'm expecting that we'll need to have you bring back revisions to address these new issues that are there or changes.
Yeah, we we can present that. Um if uh I I'm not saying I need to streamline this. The question would just be, um are you so we're we're gonna streamline by providing a clean PDF. Do you want booklets again for those changes? I can provide a clean booklet when we're all finished up, if that helps. I didn't know if you need that to vote on.
I'm going to ask for some comments here from the other board members, see what they think needs to be done in terms of how we continue to move this process forward. What are you suggesting?
So typically, um we're we're talking about mostly grammatical. There's a few things we talked about that I would love a conversation with you and I I don't mind that. The that we talked about a trail commitment on Gorsuch that would um and catch Justin up real quick on maybe the first line that we talked about was maybe the bigger plan, because we talked about the plan early on. Uh there's no active recreation for the lots one and two, so there was some discussion about providing somewhere outside of lots for them to at least enjoy, so. Uh we talked about maybe a commitment there for a trail. Uh again, I I think we could maybe highlight that on the engineering as we get through and figure out exactly where that might be appropriate. Um so I almost feel like maybe that's a commitment. We can come back and provide further detail uh after some of the final development plan or the final uh engineering details are provided. We can talk about if there's drainage improvements that are required in that area, like a swale, that we could potentially do a trail alongside. So um I'm not a, I don't think we're against any of the comments you had, and I think we'll take all those into consideration. Um but I I don't know that a um full meeting to go through them would be. I don't think we have a lot to talk about. So uh if you'd want to make the condition on those uh changes being made, I think we're open to all those. I didn't leave any topics down here that we need to further research. Uh it was just uh making sure that obviously we make the modifications in accordance with what was recommended, so. Um I don't know if there's any uh new comments beyond that, but that was kind of the way I took that.
I mean, there's just a couple of new comments, but
Yeah.
I would be okay if we got a a a letter similar to this one.
Yeah.
With all of the changes and then a PDF. Uh an electronic copy. And when we all sign off on that, that we start getting some hard copies once, once it was nailed down. So there'd be a hard copy for the library to be. I don't know that we all need hard copies, because I don't know what I would do with it. Uh once it's, you know, once it's in place, but as long as I had a saved copy that I could go back to refer to.
Yeah, I like the PDF because you can bookmark our attachments. We obviously can make those, make sure those are available, so. Um I don't have any opposition to that. I and we're not opposed to coming back to see you. I just I didn't want the expectation that we're gonna make amendments and then it takes three weeks to make amendments, because uh I I think in reality, um I would love uh if you could provide like we did last time emails, because uh that helps me check off that everything was taken care of. Um and then obviously, we're gonna provide some of these, but some maybe some of them are qualitative, like in the covenants, we're gonna provide some cross references. I just don't want to get caught up in the minutia of we've added it in three sections, but not the fourth, that type of thing. So um I would like that process to be fluid uh continually past the approval of the final development plan. I think the ones that are most critical are those that are on the development text and on the actual final development plan. And I didn't, I didn't hear any of those being critical to uh we're open to everything that was discussed. I guess that's a better way to say.
And I don't, I don't want to rush things necessarily.
Yeah.
However, I feel like we've got a lot of stuff coming down the pipe that will be benefited by having an example laid out and ready to go. So I think, I think as quickly as we can get this moved through will be better for us in the long run, because I think we have, I think we've spent a lot of time looking at it. Like, I don't think it's rushed by any stretch.
That that's true, but again, using something as an example, we want it to be right.
And I think
All of our commercials.
I like uh.
And I think Joe has done
Yeah.
done extremely well, making sure all of our comments have been taken into account and making those changes and you know, I don't think we've gotten much pushback from you on
Yeah.
on things.
I am pretty stubborn.
Joe, can you give us um this as is a listing again of all the items that uh
I would love to.
brought out tonight that were new?
Yes.
Uh this addressed uh to me, made it so much easy
Yep.
in terms of the changes that you've made. But I think if you pair that with PDF file, I'm not looking to get another hard copy.
Yeah, I might in that letter say we added spaces and here's the reference to the places we added spaces from a grammatical standpoint, but I'll hit the big picture items and maybe next Monday we can use that as the basis for your recommendation, if that's what I'm hearing. Um if that's not rushing.
Everyone else is comfortable with doing it in that way, then you could bring that back next week. That I was hoping we could get to it next week.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, I I think that that'd be my game plan. So I'll bring you back a a list. If we have to add one or two items, I feel like we could do that during the meeting. And that'll be a small amendments made to that letter.
Document, because the way that we've got it set up currently in our uh zoning resolution is we have to make the recommendation.
Right.
It goes to the trustees.
Right. Yep, and we'll have probably a thirty forty five day process there to get in front of the trustees. So we'll have plenty of time to make the formal amendments to the document. So they can see the formal document. I just was thinking a week might be a quick turnaround to kick you guys back a PDF. Make sure it's all inclusive.
Uh in March is on the twenty second.
Okay. Twenty second, March twenty second?
Uh fifteen.
No.
Oh, they moved it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's re- and if it was the fifteenth, it's a week later. It's the twenty second.
Okay.
So that that would be their next meeting.
Okay.
Um if we have it and we take act, if we take action on it next week, then the information can get to them potentially. Um then they would deal with it on the twenty second.
Perfect.
I mean, it was our recommendation to that.
Okay, yeah, I'm open to that. I I'm I was looking forward to seeing you guys next week. I wasn't expecting a vote tonight. I just uh figured if it was the speed of it, I I just didn't want to come with unrealistic expectations next week. So I I will update the actual documents as well and provide those in PDF form, but we'll kind of focus the conversation next week on just that bulleted list of what was modified. So you'll have the documents for reference. And if we miss something, we will make sure uh we obviously get it addressed in the next thirty forty five days.
Big, one of the biggies is for within the covenants, pick up on the issue of making sure that the development uh plan was upfront that
Sure. Perfect. Yep, we'll make sure that. And we'll talk to uh um I'm sure uh your count, he has in-house counsel, so they're they're usually uh easy to uh to work with on that type of thing. So we we can chat about um what those changes are and I'm sure they've run into some of the.
You can have an answer to the question with regard to the subdivision by next week. I don't know whether it would be that lucky to get that out of the engineer's office before.
Oh, uh no, I don't believe so. So we're s- our goal is to submit a preliminary subdivision next Monday uh as well, so um my hope would be that we might have a preliminary subdivision set. Uh we've been working with our engineer to try to understand what all is included in that, just to make sure that we're not uh getting the cart before the horse, but since we didn't have substantial changes to the development plan itself, um they've been proceeding with design. So uh I do expect that that process will be continuing and we'll be working with the township staff to make sure that as we go through that process, you guys have continual review, so. It might be that you say, hey, can you come in and talk about something? And I'm more than open to that. Um if uh you see something on those plans you want to bring up and discuss, so.
One last thing.
Mm-hmm.
On the uh affidavit temporary power of attorney.
Yes. We we provided an updated one. It seems like the first time it was attached, uh it was the so this has been a long process. So um there was one provided in the fall uh that we we got um that wasn't.
I haven't looked at it.
See, it seemed to have expired.
There, yeah, the one that was included had ex- well, technically, I think expired, but we continuously got those updated from uh Steiner, so. Uh what what we're looking at right now is um the one that's in there, they just included some language saying and they subsequently have included those in the past and notarized it, but um I do have a copy of the one in the fall too, if there's any questions about.
Problem is that the the uh the date on the notary is uh February seventeenth, two thousand twenty three.
Correct.
The date of
The signature is twenty two.
Is twenty twenty two.
Got to check with your notary. They should have notarized that.
We'll we'll figure that one out, but I I'm sure it wasn't an erroneous, so we'll supplement it with the correct document, so. I do have one from the fall, though, that supplemented through March, so um I feel like there's one in effect right now. Uh so I wasn't as critical in finding that earlier, because we had looked back to the one that was, I think it was in October that was provided to us, and they're every six months, but um and it dates back to the date of seminals.
But if if this is gonna be the one that's in the book.
Yeah, we'll uh we'll get that correctly. Yeah. Appreciate that.
Last page, last comment.
Thank you. If I was winking at you, I had LASIK last week, so I appreciate it. I was trying not to like wink at the board, but I uh I've been blinking a lot in the last weekend here, so appreciate you guys' time.
And at this point, we'll look at a a motion to recess. This until Monday, next Monday.
Could be recessed or
Continue.
Do we just have a a a ready to remain as one Monday?
Yeah.
This is a hearing that we opened dealing with this PRCD.
Well, then I make a motion that we recess the hearing for the PRCD
Twenty three oh.
Twenty three oh one uh to March sixth at seven forty five.
Yep, I'll second.
All right, you got a motion in a second, recessing to March sixth at seven forty five. Own favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you then. Oh, see you anyway.
Yes.
Yes.
Hopefully.
See you next week.
Yeah, we got everybody.
I had no idea.
I had no idea either. We'll go a little later.
Um tomorrow she starts working again at two.
Three six.
She starts working what?
Again at two PM. You could do it Wednesday later.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Well.
Let me know.
Yeah, Picasso.
Go room over there?
Well, she's taking the table. Uh you shouldn't.
Coffee and a biscuit?
Yeah, alright.
That's it. Okay.
Here tomorrow.
Tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you.
You, Mike.
Yeah, good night.
I didn't either. I hope that I think my mic was off the whole meeting. I'm on, I made sure that they could turn it on over there. Joe, did you collect this or someone else? Well. No, that's true. If you've got anything that you specifically want uh Joe to know about, send him an email and just do it directly to him. Uh because my expectation it would be that that proven uh with condition. But tonight, there were so many, that would be a way to do it.
No, I think Monday for one two.
But everything that
No. There usually is something we have to sign materialize tag for
Alright, that's not it.
on hearings.
Right here.
Okay.
So uh we'll fill that out next week.
Okay.
If we decide that we're moving it forward. It's got all, it'll have all three dates on it. Zone Commission two six, two twenty seven and three six.
Didn't anything work?
That's it.
It doesn't work right away. Got your son and son-in-law?
Son-in-law. Um you didn't have the same kind of swelling she did, so it's
Did she have it done at the same place?
Um not, I don't know. No, he hadn't done it all, no worries.